Good Tuesday afternoon, guys. Jerry Miller. Welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. We're live in Charlottesville, the Commonwealth of the country and the world on the I Love Seaville Network. It's great to be with you on a gorgeous, gorgeous day to be alive when you're above the mud. There's no reason to complain. The sun is shining. We have been blessed. Thank you kindly for joining us, guys. A lot to cover on the broadcast. This, the only interactive program in Charlottesville or Central Virginia where you can dictate the pace and tempo of the show by leaving your comments in the comment section. Give it a like, give it a share right now. School starts across Charlottesville and Central Virginia. We'll break that down for you. We'll talk Greenbrier Elementary and how they're teaching kids outside. We'll give you a picture from Greenbrier Elementary. We have RAs, Residential Advisors at the University of Virginia petitioning the school because they don't feel safe, guiding students in dorms on grounds at the University of Virginia. Business is upticking across Charlottesville and Central Virginia with students back, guys. We got a picture from the downtown mall to show just how busy Charlottesville, Virginia was this past weekend. And folks, Fashion Scare Mall is under new management. We will break that story down from the Daily Progress. And of course, we'll scuttlebutt and we'll rumor mill what is, what is planned for Fashion Scare Mall. Jesse Rutherford from Nelson County Board of Supervisors will join us in T minus 19 minutes. Huge, 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 huge fan of Jesse Rutherford on this broadcast. We'll talk millionaires in Charlottesville, Virginia. We will compare and contrast those millionaires to Beverly Hills, California. Boys and girls, Donna Martin, Kelly Taylor, Dylan McKay. I just saw them walking down the downtown mall. That story for you on the I Love Seaville Show. Ted Weschler lives in this area. He's Warren Buffett's number two from Berkshire Hathaway. Guys, we have a country store and Free Union that's been in business for 92 years, Maupin Brothers, that is now closed. Such a bummer and a kick in the you-know-where. That story coming up for you. We know, you know, we love the Big Apple on this show. My wife spent eight years there at Blackstone, living in the Upper East Side. We got some statistics about New York City and how it's being hammered worse than nine 11 due to COVID. And Northeastern, the university in Boston, in Bean Town in Massachusetts, kicks 11 students to the curb after they're partying in a hotel in Boston. Thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars of tuition for one semester down the tubes. How will the parents respond? That story and more for you on the I Love Seaville Show, guys. Give the show a like and a share. We'll give some props to Interstate Pest and Service Companies, a home's best friend. Interstate Pest and Service Companies, for more than 50 years. Interstate Pest and Service Companies has not only served you, but they've made Charlottesville and Central Virginia a better place for all of us. And I genuinely, genuinely mean that. We would be remiss not to give Judah Wickhauer, our director, some props. Judah Wickhauer, thank you for being on this team. We start the program, Judah Wickhauer, with the topic that is on everyone's mind. If you're on social media right now, you're seeing the, the once a year photos of students returning back to school. We see mom and dads showing pictures of kindergartners, first graders, second graders, preschool students, whatever it may be. They could be walking in a hallway. They could be going in the classroom. They could be leaving their front door. School starts across Central Virginia. Some will learn virtually, some will learn in a classroom. Regardless, we're all a little bit on edge and uncertain what to expect with this school year. We all hope and pray it's better than the spring semester, which let's cut to the chase. The spring semester, this past one, nothing really happened. We've had a summer to prepare for virtual learning. We've had a summer to prepare for COVID-19 in our schools. How's it gonna go? We will cover it closely. DeeDee Smith is gonna join us on the show tomorrow, someone who's passionate about education, someone who's on the board at Barrett Early Learning Center over there on Ridge Street, a vice mayor at one time. I love DeeDee Smith on the program. Someone tell DeeDee I said hello. She's gonna join us tomorrow to talk about this. I'm gonna have this perspective to you. If your son or daughter is learning on a computer, if your son or daughter is learning in a classroom, my words of encouragement are to be patient. We are in uncharted territories. We don't know what to expect. We all are doing the best we can with what we got. That's how successful people go about their life. And I encourage you to share that mentality. Do the best you can with what we got, with your kids, with your teachers and your peers who are a bit uncertain right now. So I'm gonna put in perspective how kids are learning. Judah Wickhauer, why don't we show the photo and give me the thumbs up when it's on screen, my friend of Greenbrier Elementary. We have a teacher and a student learning outside. Is that on screen, Judah? Yes, it is. A teacher and a student learning outside with some plexiglass between them. I saw this picture initially and it broke my heart. Why it broke my heart? Because I thought of my little boy learning this way. Look at the screen, look at the screen, look at the screen. Judah Wickhauer, keep it on, keep it on the screen, my friend, keep it on the screen. It broke my heart initially. But then I gave more thought to it and then I started having this mindset. This is the best we can with what we got. Okay? We're doing the best we can with what we got. You got a teacher, you have a student, you have a table and a safe environment outside. You have the teacher with the mask on, you have some plexiglass for some extra protection for the teacher, and they're doing the best they can with what we got. So instead of being heartbroken, my mindset has changed since my friend, and you know who you are, James, sent me this photo. And James, I love you on this program. When I saw this initially, it was heartbreaking. Then I started saying, you know what? This ain't too bad. This is not too bad. You're learning outside. We're alive. We're under the sunshine. We're around our peers, albeit in a six-foot capacity. This isn't too bad. And I encourage all of us as we move forward in this virtual learning environment, this in-person learning environment, this uncertain learning environment, to keep a similar mindset. Please, because it's tough out there and it's gonna get tougher as we head into flu season. So if it takes learning outside, or if you're in my neighborhood, I live in the east side of Alamo County in the Keswick area, and on the east side of Alamo County in the Keswick area, there's been a pop-up tent, a tent like you would see at a wedding. And this pop-up tent, a tent like you would see at a wedding, is on an asphalt parking lot in front of a country club. And 10 to 12 students are learning from first to fourth grade under a tent like you would see at a wedding. Three hundred and fifty dollars a week for this perspective, for this respective pod. It ain't cheap. You add that, do some quick math, that's 1,400 bucks a month. Fourteen hundred bucks for this pod is more than most private schools. Some parents want their kids to learn in person. Some frankly want to maintain their sanity and want to get their kid out the door for a little bit. So you do the best you can with what you got. If your Zoom crashes, or if your virtual learning's not working, turn your computer off, restart it, try again, and do the best you can with what you got. Please, guys, pass that mentality on to anybody who needs it. Let's go to the University of Virginia, Judah Wickhauer. This headline intrigued me very much. This headline from the Cavalier Daily, you have RAs, Residential Advisors. I went to the University of Virginia. I was old dorms, Dabney 101, first left. I was in utter terror in the dorms, in utter nightmare for the RA. I was the one doing all the stuff that he should not do. Still, the RA was patient with me because I, he realized I was an 18-year-old with the maturity level of an eight-year-old. Okay? So RAs at the University of Virginia are banning together. They're calling upon the university to address urgent safety concerns. RAs are anonymously petitioning the University of Virginia and saying, we are frontline workers. You are sending students from all over the globe to Charlottesville and you're asking us to essentially be their babysitters, and you're not protecting us with the right PPE for us to maintain our health and safety. I feel for the RAs. I feel for the RAs. My brother was an RA at the University of Virginia. Why do you become an RA? Maybe you get a little money off of your housing. Why do you become an RA? Maybe you want a little money in your pocket. Why do you become an RA? Because you want to make a difference to the lives of young people, and you love being around the energy of first, second, and third years, fourth years, whatever it may be. That's why you become an RA. And they're straight up saying to Jim Ryan, they're straight up saying to the administration, to the Board of Supervisors, they're straight up calling them out. They're petitioning. They're signing a letter in unison, power in numbers, collective bargaining, and saying, we do not feel safe in these antiquated hallways, these poorly ventilated buildings, buildings that are frankly never clean, and they have 18 to 22-year-olds living in them. What does that sound like? Sounds like teachers in schools, old schools, hallways with bad ventilation. The teachers did it. Now the RAs are trying to rise to the occasion and saying, UVA, help, help, help. We need you. Help us, please. We'll follow that story as Residential Advisors are really on the cusp of protesting the University of Virginia. The next headline comes from grounds and stays at UVA. Virtual learning ain't easy. How many times you been on a Zoom call when you're talking to somebody and that person's face freezes like this? One shot on me, Judah. I saw that on Monday. It happens to all of us. The Zoom calls buffer. They crash. You fall out of the conference. You can't get something online because of poor connection. Well, guys, it happened at the University of Virginia yesterday. You heard me correctly. It happened at the University of Virginia yesterday. So if one of the best schools in the country, arguably the best public school in America, and I'm an orange and blue guy, so maybe my feelings are mixed. We know it's in the top two from a public school standpoint. On Monday, an outage left students unable to access their virtual coursework or their online classes. So the premier university in America from a public school standpoint has a crash of epic proportions that leaves students across grounds angry, irritated, frustrated, unable to access their classes online or access their Zoom calls with their professors and their peers. I bring this to your attention to offer perspective. If it happens at the University of Virginia, it's gonna happen at your elementary school, at your middle school, at your high school, in Nelson County, in Fluvana County, in Orange County, in Louisa County, in Alamo County, in Charlottesville City Schools. It's gonna happen. So if it's happening at UVA, expect it to happen at your school as well. And when it does happen, have the perspective that this is happening at Thomas Jefferson's University as well, where money seems to be limitless, where technology and resources are infinite. It's happening to the best of the best. I offer this story to you for perspective because it's gonna happen to you, possibly this week, with schools returning to Central Virginia. The next headline, Judah Wickhauer, Judah Wickhauer's fabulous director, comes from our local economy. Business was popping in. J-Dubs, get that on screen, get that on screen, get that on screen from CBS 19. We're seeing uptick in business on the corner, uptick in business in Midtown, uptick in business on the downtown mall, Barracks Road Shopping Center and Route 29. Students are back, parents are back. The town is vibrant. My friend, Dr. Rebecca Downey, I love you, Dr. Rebecca Downey. You are class act, you're intelligent, you've made this show better so many times. She posted this photo, sent this photo to me as well over the weekend. Judah Wickhauer, get it on screen, get it on screen, get it on the screen. Look at the screen, guys. This, the Charlottesville Downtown Mall, on a Saturday evening, when it's about 70 degrees, a moving weekend. It's popping, baby. You got energy, a palpable buzz in the air, a palpable buzz that you can wear on your body, almost as if you're wearing a Versace cashmere sweater. Downtown mall, looking good. The merchants happy, cash registers, cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. People being able to pay their rent. People able to bring staff members back because they have business in their restaurants, on their patios. What I saw over the weekend was 99% of the people doing it the right way, wearing a mask when they're next to people, staying six feet apart on the downtown mall, waiting for reservations at a restaurant and leaving room for the Holy Spirit, the Father, Son, the Holy Ghost, the three wise men, and Noah, and a couple of pairs of animals, so people don't spread COVID. Okay? We can do this. We can manage this until we get the testing and to the vaccine. Come out, do it the right way. Sure, there are a couple of bad apples. There's always a couple of bad apples. When you see them, you just go in the other direction. You just go in the other direction. The downtown mall, one more time, if you can put that on screen, is in my heart. My business is based downtown. A lot of my retirement with the ownership of a commercial building on Market Street is based downtown. My family loves these eight blocks. And when I see people like this downtown, makes my heart smile. Okay? Makes my heart smile. Small, follow and support the small businesses, please, guys. The next headline comes from Fashion Scare Mall, Fashion Square Mall, whatever you want to call it. I call it Fashion Scare personally. Under new management, Fashion Scare sees stores close under a possible sale. We've all heard the scuttlebutt. We've all heard the rumor mill. We've all heard the chit-a-chata, the chit-a-chata about the University of Virginia and Fashion Square Mall. I will table that for now. And we will talk about a mall that if you walk through is a ghost town of epic proportions. The only place that's more of a ghost town mall than the downtown mall is Fashion Square Mall. You got JC Penney's piecing out. You got a number of those businesses, Asta Luago in. Ladies and gentlemen, we will see what happens to the Fashion Square Mall. Late last year, 45.2 million Charlottesville Fashion Square Mall loan was split across two commercial-backed securities, was sent to special servicing. Yes, the mall is defaulting on its debt service. We'll see what happens to one of the most important pieces of property in Alamo County. As you come down Route 29 South, from the airport, from Northern Virginia, whatever it may be, to enjoy Charlottesville, you drive by this mall. And right now, it's not a true representation of what our community is about, just like that miserable, miserable, miserable Dewberry Hotel, the extorting emperor of empty lots, Johnny, little Johnny Dewberry from Atlanta. He's making the downtown mall look bad with that skeleton of a structure. He ignores and neglects. Fashion Square Mall, heading in that direction, not making the community look good. Debt service default, 45-plus million dollars on the line. Time will tell what happens with that piece of property. The next headline, mi amigo, Judah Wickhauer, before we welcome Jesse Rutherford to the show, and we'll get to him in about four minutes, we'll tell you how you can save $288 on Ting Fiber Internet. Jude, I want to give some love in a matter of moments to Scott Wagner, Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine. Before I do, I want to let you know what we're gonna talk about after Jesse. We'll talk millionaires in Charlottesville, Virginia. We will compare and contrast millionaires in Charlottesville, Virginia to Beverly Hills, 90210. I first fell in love with Tiffany Amber Thiessen when she was Kelly Kapowski on Saved by the Bell. That love bolstered and blossomed when she was Valerie Malone on 90210. 90210, Beverly Hills, they got millionaires. So does Charlottesville, Virginia. We'll tell you how many on the I Love Seaville Show. We'll compare and contrast that to Beverly Hills. We'll talk about Ted Weschler, Warren Buffett's number two, living in Charlottesville. We'll talk Maupin Brothers, a country store in Free Union, that's Asta Luago, that's Peace Out, that's Hit the Road Jack, that's closed after 92 years. I love this country store, love this country store, and I know the community does well. So we'll give a little, uh, we'll give, we'll pay our respects to the Maupin Brothers. We'll talk New York City pounding, COVID pounding, New York City worse than nine 11, and we'll talk Northeastern booting 11 students from Boston. Their parents paid $36,500 for one semester. You heard me correctly. Thirty-six thousand five hundred for one semester. 11 kids pieced out of this school and their mom and dad ain't getting that coin back. We'll talk about the cause and effect of that on the I Love Seaville Show, and we'll play a video at the bottom of the hour, roughly 1:30, that if it doesn't make your heart smile, you have a stone for a heart and ice water running through your veins. Scott Wagner, Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine, Jude, give them some love. The good doctor, changing people's lives through chiropractic care, sports medicine, and physical therapy. Scott Wagner, Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine. Also, guys, Ting Fiber Internet. We've partnered with them at the I Love Seaville Network. They are giving you an opportunity to save $288 on the best internet in our community. Give your child, give your business, give your Zoom room at your home office what it needs, and it's the best of the best. Ting Fiber Internet. We've done it. We're running a massive network on it. It's Ting Fiber Internet, iloveceaville.ting.com, iloveceaville.ting.com for $288 reduction on the best internet out there. Judah Wickhauer, I'm reaching out to Jesse Rutherford right now. I am fired up. I had a fantastic three days. I know this man, Jesse Rutherford, had a fantastic three days. He busts his tail. He supports Nelson County. He loves Central Virginia. He works his tail off, and he loves a cold beverage from time to time as well.
Absolutely.
Jesse, you are live for everybody. Que pasa amigo? How are you?
Ah, doing good. I guess this is day 160 on COVID lockdown, essentially. We're all a little bit different. I'm still a little bit different since the last show, so. More talents, learned how to bake more bread. It's getting old. It's getting very old. Yeah.
Do you have a Cagarrater? You have a Cagarrater at your house?
I do, I do. It's currently getting a little maintenance on it sadly because we've used it so much. No.
I know the feeling.
Yes, yes. When the bars are closed, you have to make your own for everyone.
Uh, okay, my friend, this is what I want to do here. You're a true champion, ambassador, and evangelist of God's country and Nelson County. Give us the update, my friend of Nelco.
Right, so Nelson County, we're having a, it's, it's been interesting. COVID has relatively been stagnant. We haven't had, we've had some big increases, but nothing too major. Uh, schools are rolling. Our, our school system is learning a lot about what it doesn't know and what it needs to know better of in this time. You know, as for the government itself, you know, we're working on some fun initiatives like revitalizing the town of Livingston, doing some street scape work, so I'm really excited about that. I'm sure, I'm not sure if you're familiar, we spent 1.1 million dollars on CARESAC money to expand to 500 homes and less to moderate income households, which is gonna be huge and exciting after that, as we're gonna roll out probably another million dollars here towards the end of the year, once we get a better grasp of where we're at. Our, our goal is within the next couple of years to have fiber internet to every single home in Nelson County.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so we're, we're working hard at it and we're gonna, if there's one priority, I do know, and it's broadband and having access to broadband. That has definitely been the mindset of our government and how we're gonna operate our businesses, how we're gonna live in our households, and the other side of culture and with after COVID. So, you know, we need internet to do it.
Jesse Rutherford, live on the I Love Seaville Show, guys. We have Seaville Weekly watching NBC 29 and CBS 19, one city councillor, one Board of Supervisors, and one state delegate on the broadcast. Comments coming in already for you. You're a popular guy. Schools in Nelson County, they're asking if they, if you can give us an update on what you guys are doing.
So with the schools right now, they're operating virtual. I believe that was for the first eight or nine weeks. And, uh, you know, the struggle there is internet access. I mean, that's definitely a common, us having the geography we do, it's hard to do that. We've given out MiFi's to every student that needs it. Are, are not, we're in the process of doing that so that they can access internet through cellular, cellular, uh, uh, data. And with that happening, you know, I am really heartbroken. We're not gonna have many sports going on. I speak for a lot of the kids who are looking forward to that. There's a lot of kids who I wish could be out there, you know, getting recruiters looking at them because they come from a lesser moderate income bracket, and this is how they get out. And, you know, I am upset with that, but at the same time is that we're trying to keep a smile on our faces and, you know, operate the best we can. Just like the teacher that you mentioned with the plexiglass between her, that's what we got. All we can do at this time.
Are you guys doing that as well?
I am not for certain on how, if there's any teacher-student interaction on that level. I can't speak to that. But I do know we have a lot of passionate teachers who are going above and beyond the best they can with their, with their students, so.
Let's talk about trying to get virtual learning and make it ubiquitous and approachable for all. So are these hotspots you're giving to the parents? The second part of the question is, did you have to do some training on how to use these hotspots in the virtual learning? And then I guess the third part is, do we think this is gonna be consistent and reliable, or is it a wait and see, Jesse?
It's, it's a big wait and see. Um, you know, we, there, we're gonna be giving these MiFi's out to some kids who don't have any cellular access. You know, and that's gonna be very unfortunate, difficult. Uh, the difference is they won't have to hopefully drive as far to get to a location to use that data. They could just drive down the street somewhere else to get the data that they need to download their homework. You know, the other side of that is what happens in a county when you add 1,000 MiFi's into the networks. Is Verizon ready for that? You know? That's a lot of gig, you know, and they have to be ready for that. So hopefully that, that's been communicated. When it comes to, I think, a sad reality and one that I hate to admit, I'm ready to go back to normal. But I think that what we're doing is we're prepping for the long term. I think that's, if there's something that, since April, I'm being dead serious, it's been 160 days since lockdown of April 1st, it's, it's up to today. And if you, when we talked then, I was like, oh, 70 days, this is gonna be a nightmare. And at this point, I've come to the, we've come to the realization that this is probably gonna be a longer toll than we think. So hopefully we'll be out of it by the time we get to April.
What's the temperature? What's the mood of, of Nelson Countyans across the, the county here? I mean, are you guys upbeat? You're hopeful? You're positive? I mean, I guess we're really gonna tell as we get into this virtual learning environment with school. I mean, what's the mood?
Right. You know, the mood right now is, I, I'm sure every teacher wants to be with their kids. There's no doubt whatsoever that they want to be with their kids. But at the same time, as we all gotta keep a smile on our faces and look to some positive news and try to, you know, keep these kids, kids inspired because, you know, at the end of the day, here in two to three years, they're graduating high school, and they're the next generation that lived through this, and this is culture-changing. So, you know, try to keep that level of optimism and trying to, um, help people be imaginative differently. You know, and I'm taking, when you're not, when you don't have that social experience, you know, how can we help these kids become imaginative in their own spaces, you know, and not have to worry about outside, I guess, influence from dictating that, but how to create that on your own. So I think that you were starting to see some of that. We see that with people in their career choices now. You know, how can, I mean, I have two friends who work ASIS tutors because they have bachelor's degrees online, and it's phenomenal, you know, and that couple's now making really good money, living at home. And I imagine that's gonna be the case for a lot of businesses as well. You're gonna see a lot of them changing how they operate. And as we get fiber internet throughout Nelson County and we continue to push that, you know, I'm telling you, you know, it's, it's, that temperature's gonna change, you know, we're gonna be different. I mean, I think one thing that we don't talk a lot about is how many of these businesses found the new efficiencies and how they operate? And they're like, wow, actually 60% of our workforce can work from home and we don't need that much square footage. That's gonna be very real. I mean, there's a lot of organizations here, here in Charlottesville, Alamo, Nelson, that, you know, it's like that software developer, like that think tank or whatever. They're gonna find out that, oh, wait, we don't have to be in an office for synergy to do this, so. I think everybody's trying to digest those feelings, and that's the temperature to me. Everybody's learning this new thing, a new way to operate, new way to think and socialize as well. I mean, that's, yeah.
How about the business community, man? Um, you know, I love going to the Barrow House. You know, I love going to the Livingston Cafe. One of my best buddies lives in Arrington. Frankly speaking, we do 10 to 15 tubing trips a year on the Ty River. We've done none of those. We've done none of those this year, which is a kick in the nuts. There's very few things I enjoy better than drinking a six-pack, having a designated driver, getting in my buddy's pickup truck, getting on a float and floating the Ty. I mean, it is freaking awesome. Um, how's your business community doing?
Our business community's doing okay. Um, they're struggling. As I mentioned last time, our farmers are taking a hit with Alamo-Churchsville restaurants not taking in as much as they were. That was a huge, major hit, uh, and there's gonna be a long-term effect to that when they're not breeding as much livestock as they were planning, or they're not growing as much as they were planning because of COVID. It's hard for them to take the risk on infrastructure and, uh, uh, putting in cap, more capital into your business when you just don't quite know what the demand's gonna be in six months. You know, I, I do know with the recent announcement of lock-in being postponed, that we're gonna take another huge hit. Um, that's, that's gonna be tough. Did I see that not happening? Not really. I did, we all saw, you know, there's no music festival that's happening this year. And that's also unfortunate because I'm also a deadhead, so I was looking forward to it. But at the same time, as we have to look out for our lodging industry, you know, we're seeing a new kind of clientele. That clientele's gonna go to Europe, is now doing like this East Coast tour, and Nelson County is like, hey, you know, we might not be Naples, Italy, but, you know, we're the East Coast of it. We're the Naples, we're the East Coast version of Italy in terms of like access to the wine and good beverages and good views and all that. So we're starting to see our, our lodging try to take on new trends. Um, you know, there always is that concern of, can we do another five weeks of this? Because a lot of these businesses are looking at their next week payroll, wondering if they're gonna make it. And I totally get it. Nelson County rolled out a business grant program, uh, for those who are listening, and you are a business owner, please get ahold of our economic development and get your application in so that you can get some of our grant money, um, to help operate your business. But, you know, that's here today, and we're gonna have to figure out what to do next.
Wintergreen Resort, an update from Wintergreen, critical, important, critically important here to the county, certainly. Anything you can offer from a Wintergreen standpoint? I mean, we're going into the season. I hope to God we're bombarded with snow. Um, I hope it's a cold winter. I hope Wintergreen gets hammered with snow. Anything you can offer from a Wintergreen standpoint?
Sure. Um, I know that they were doing fairly well when COVID kinda hit because a lot of people went to that, that, that portion because there's, it's rural, it's offset. If you're a little bit, you have, can stay there a couple of months than you did. Um, you know, horses are up and running. I just played a, played a round over there in Stony Creek. So I got my son Vern, kept my swings in, hurt my arm, not gonna lie. And I'm not a golfer whatsoever. Not going to lie. And I'm not a golfer whatsoever. I usually like to follow the beer truck that goes around. That's usually my talent when it comes to playing golf. That's my only, ex, people ask me which one would I like, which hole would I like to sponsor? And I say the beer cart. Um, but you know, it, it's one of those things to where I, I, I think they're doing good, you know, I, it's a beautiful place for those who are listening. It's, if you want to have a sabbatical, if you want to go see some beautiful views, go to Wintergreen. Um, I'm right there with you rooting for snow because I haven't gone skiing in a while. I mean, I think it was last year, but you know, there was the potato patch and all that and I'm just, it was a little flooded with amateur skiers. So it's not really, don't want to get run over best I can, but uh, yeah, I'm right there with you. Any, I, I want any recreation facility. I've already hiked every hike in Nelson again. Um, I'm trying to diversify the hikes that I can do. And you know, after that, hopefully we'll have a new atmosphere.
Well said. Uh, we had your boy Richard Avert on the show. Richard Avert, like you, a champion of Nelson County. Um, we were talking with Richard. We also were talking with your friend Keith Smith of how Nelson County is freaking booming from a real estate standpoint. Perspective you can offer.
Yeah, uh, there's no inventory. Um, you know, when it comes to uh, investment, real estate, it gets snatched up as soon as it pops up. These are hot and heavy now. Uh, there's a lot of people staying put. You know, there's not a lot of new inventory coming up. Construction's on fire. This is a very underreported part. So listen to this. Construction's on fire and currently you're, we're dealing with 100 to 200% surcharges on lumber.
I heard.
Because of COVID. Talk about a nightmare. So you have no inventory and you can't afford to build. So it's the, it's a nightmare. So you can't create new inventory. People aren't selling their stuff or moving. So you just got a, you've got some highly inflated, you have a very inflated housing market and you know, honestly, and I, I was telling some of this the other day. I said, you know, it kind of feels like Europe in a way. You can't afford to build and nobody's willing to leave. You know, so you have this huge, huge uh, seller's market that's coming. Like if you're looking to sell, honestly, between now and probably November, your house is going to be worth more and that's my suggestion there. Um, but yeah, that's, that's, and rental market still insane. Uh, you know, we all expected there to be a downturn in rental, rental uh, monthly rates because of COVID and Charlottesville and students not coming back to Charlottesville. Well, it honestly almost was the opposite. Now there's definitely nothing. Everyone renewed their lease so that they knew of something that stays put. So.
Um, the uh, the rental market, can you put price points in perspective and what you get for those price points? I know Charlottesville, Almaral County well. I do not know Nelson well. Can you give us an example?
Sure. So uh, and one of the bases you can look at that is section eight housing is based off of the metropolis area of Charlottesville. Uh, an Almaral, which is accurate because we're dealing with the Charlottesville, Almaral market that's moving to Nelson. People, you know, the pay to travel. I mean, Keith, I'm sure has told you a hundred times what that looks like. Um, but you know, because reality is three bedroom for 1,200 bucks with a large yard and five acres of Charlottesville would be thousands and thousands. Moving to the countryside of Nelson, they're like, wow, it's a, it's a mansion. Um, you know, I, I, I think city Almaral and in rural context is they get upset. Cause I'll agree, it's not affordable, but a reality is if I had it at, if, if a rental person had, a landlord had the rate at $900, you're still going to have this hundred thousand, guy who makes a hundred thousand dollars a year apply for it, you know? So it's just going to be like, yeah, you're still going to lose though, because this guy is still more qualified than his home. Um, so, and the only answer to that, more inventory. The only way to keep more inventory is either people start selling and let investors get in, or you allow them to build and loosen up on regulation for them to build more.
And that's your business. This is like what you do here. I mean, how, let me ask you that question before we get to personal and I, I chat what you're doing. How's your business doing?
Oh, it's doing pretty good. Um, you know, the supply chain is scary. I mean, we're all dealing with what, you know, appliances for some reason taking 60 days to get to us. You know, pressure treated lumber is, it's expensive if you find it, if you can find it, uh, you're finding other lumber surcharge charges happen. You know, there's a lot of, I mean, I would say the market's on fire, but it's only on fire as much as we can keep up with supply. Uh, which is a strange nuance that we've never really, as builders, we've never really had to deal with this in a while. Uh, it used to be hurricane season would come and we would have like a short 30, 40 days worth of it. Now it doesn't, I mean, this is a year, a year straight in watching lumber surcharges go up 100%. You know, that becomes a real cost to clients. So, you know, we're, we're, we're holding tight, we're holding steady. We're hoping it doesn't get any worse, but it's, it's strange. It's very strange times.
Give us um, a snapshot and the day of the life of Jesse Rutherford, champion of Nelson County, evangelist of Nelson County. 160 days of lockdown, how he's maintaining his sanity, his friendships, his connections. How are you doing it?
Right. Well, you know what? Uh, it's a lot of Zoom meetings. Uh, luckily with government, there's a lot of interactions virtually. So that's kept me kind of sane a little bit there, a little bit insane at the same time because you know, it's hard to argue with someone over Zoom. I'm not going to lie. It's very difficult. You have somebody over there, you really want to make a point, you really want to point your finger at them and then you're looking for the camera, you know, and it's frustrating. I'm trying to make a point, they can't get it. I'm impassioned. It's only as impassioned as the volume is on their keyboard.
Or the wifi.
Yeah, or the wifi, then uh, uh, you know, and you're just sitting there like, he had a great comment, I think. Maybe, maybe not. I mean, there was, there was one committee that I was chairing, uh, which will go nameless, but there was a member whose internet was so bad. I told the, I told the, the county, I was like, hey, let's just get to him and say something because it was literally a 50 second delay before we could hear his vote. So it was frustrating. Um, so we, but that's all right, you know, those are, that's part of it. Uh, you know, what else am I doing? With family a lot, uh, the ones who are not in danger to COVID. Um, I got to socialize with friends that I hadn't seen in a while in a nice, comfortable, personal atmosphere. Uh, you know, I think one thing I really do miss is the fellowship of church, of my church. Um, you know, we, we do still meet, but it's not quite the same with COVID. You know, small groups are a little bit more distant, you know, everybody's a little bit uneasy and you know, I think people's personalities have definitely changed a little bit too. I mean, to be honest with everyone, I mean, you know that, you've seen it. People are just a little bit different, some a lot different. And that, that kind of hurts, but you know, I've been doing my best, uh, working with all sorts of people and I'll have to send you, what's funny? I had bought a bunch of artwork for my home and I had just bought this canvas and it literally says, follow your dreams canceled. I just thought it was a good looking photo. I bought this two years ago. So now everybody comes to my house and they're like taking sorority pictures under this follow your dreams canceled picture as if it's some COVID 2020 themed party. Uh, so you know, that's, I'll have to send that to you later, but yeah, uh, we're making the best out of it, theme, whatever. Learned how to cook uh, oysters and octopus and you know, just proteins that I never would interact with ever. Thank you Wegmans and whoever else is out there supplying these. Yeah.
Jesse Rutherford, the uh, the, the leader, the board of supervisors, the renaissance man, the baker, the octopus cooker. Um, this guy really, the home builder, this guy does it all. All right.
Insurance agent. Don't forget that too.
What do you not do, Jesse? I love, love Jesse Rutherford. All right. Get us out of here on anywhere you want to go. Final word, show is yours.
Sure. All right. Uh, this is something very near and dear to my heart because in about 45 minutes, we go into a board of supervisor meeting and it's likely going to be talked about. Uh, for those who are listening, obviously there's been recent controversy and conversation about a competitive statue we have on our grounds. And I want to be the first to come out and talk about some of the things, you know, and I want everyone to know that racism and prejudice is a very serious illness and needs to be rooted out. It is a cancer to society and we need to recognize that. I do know that there are conversations that need to be had about certain statues, about what that means to some people and I want to be at ear for that. I do know this, that as we go in conversation here in Nelson County, my goal is to not just make polarization in our community, but to soften hearts. If we're going to be talking about racial injustice in our rural context, I tell you what, Nelson County will not look like the rest of this nation. And I will not let it look like that. We are going to love each other. We're going to work through it. We're going to have some tough conversations on both sides of this when we're talking about the statue. And I tell you guys what, you know, I love each and every single person who is on the, both sides of the conversation. I think you're a critical piece to Nelson County, what makes us great. But what's going to make us even better is how we control ourselves in that we don't hate each other, that we don't spew nastiness towards each other just because of a difference of opinion. That I hope that you all will bear with us as we work on this issue and know that we love you, we care about you. And it means everything to me that Nelson County still be that place that I call home and everyone else feel safe to call home as we work through that particular issue. So.
Dude, I'm ready to run through fire for you. This is why this guy is a leader in Nelson County. Dude, I love you, man. Thank you for your time, Jesse.
No problem. Thank you.
You have a good one. Jesse Rutherford, boys and girls, Nelson County Board of Supervisors, that guy, the man. Nelson County lucky to have him. Judah Wickhauer, how about that from this Board of Supervisors? In fuego, in fuego, in fuego. Um, amen brother. Um, and that's certainly on the heels of what we've seen happening in Rochester, New York. If you're not watching what's happening in Rochester, New York, it terrifies the hell out of me. Um, oh, golden rule. Um, well said, Jesse Rutherford. Well said, well said, well said. Um, next, boys and girls, boys and girls, boys and girls, millionaires in the Charlottesville area, boys and girls. This from the Seaville Weekly, it is a 2011 article. I need to stipulate this. This is from 2011. Charlottesville follows Beverly Hills on Forbes Magazine's Millionaires list with the most millionaires in the area. Um, Fisher Island, Florida, um, atop the list. Um, you got Alpine, New Jersey, Palm Beach is up there, Florida, Kings Point, Great Neck, New York. You've got Boca Raton, Florida. You've got a lot of Florida on the list because folks frankly speaking, don't want to pay taxes. Let's cut to the chase. Naples, Florida, where I was born on that list, folks don't want to pay taxes. Also on that list, Charlottesville, Virginia. Okay. So for Charlottesville residents whose adjusted gross income totals more than 200,000, the average filing is 16.7 million. That is crazy, crazy money. So a couple of things. This list from 2011 and I will relate it to 2020 in a matter of moments. This list from 2011 is certainly skewed by um, a few people who make a ton of money in this area, right? There's some serious, serious wealth. One example is Ted Weschler. Put his Wikipedia bio on screen, Judah Wickhauer. And I'm going to give you some insight on Ted. Tell me when that's on screen, Jade Upps. Ted is the number two guy for um, Warren Buffett Berkshire Hathaway. It's on screen, it's on screen, it's on screen. To put this in perspective of Ted, um, I need you guys to understand just his wealth um, and what he did to get to number two at Berkshire Hathaway. And then I'm going to head to my LinkedIn page here in a matter of moments. So Ted is a money guy. Um, a money guy with tremendous vision. So Ted literally spent for two lunches with Warren Buffett. Two lunches with Warren Buffett in July 2010. Ted Weschler of the Charlottesville area spent just under 2.7 million dollars at a, a, a church auction to have a private lunch with Warren Buffett. 2.7 million dollars for lunch with the oracle from Omaha, Warren Buffett. And 2012, or excuse me, in 2011, the very next year, Ted won a second lunch with Warren Buffett. And in the second time, he upped his bid even more to just under 2.7 million, slightly higher than the first. So cut to the chase. This guy's freaking brilliant. He's got deep pockets. He basically said, look, I'm going to try to impress what is seen as the best equities and stock investor in the world, Warren Buffett. And I'm going to do that by spending 2.7 million dollars in 2010 and 2.7 million dollars in 2011 just to have lunch with the oracle from Omaha. Okay, that's nasty. That's impressive, right? So boys and girls, that's an example of this obscene wealth in the area and how the obscene wealth in this area is frankly, um, skewed by handful of people, don't know the exact number, that have money we can never imagine. We're talking close to billionaires in our community. I want to cut to the chase. From 2011 to 2020, uh, 2020 where we are now, I can assure you that that wealth gap has expanded, has gotten larger. I would bet you there's even more millionaires, 10 millionaire and plus and 100 billionaire plus individuals in our community than ever before. Why? Because it's beautiful. They fall in love at the University of Virginia. They fall in love with Charlottesville in four years there. You've got the mountains, you've got sports, you've got Tony Bennett, you've got Bronco Mendenhall. You've got Corin Capshaw, you've got the downtown mall, you've got more restaurants per capita um, than any city in America outside of eight or nine, 10 of, 10, 11 of them, whatever the statistic is. Charlottesville has a hell of a lot of restaurants. You've got a lot of stuff to do. It's a cosmopolitan city, so people stay. You get a little bit more land than your Northern Virginias, your New York cities, your San Francisco. So there's more wealth here than ever. The reason I bring this to you is because the wealth gap undoubtedly is expanding and increasing in our community. It's expanding and increasing in Nelson County. You just heard Jesse say it. It's expanding and increasing in Almaral County. It's expanded, increasing in the city of Charlottesville and now it's trickling over to other areas as well. So what can we do to close the wealth gap? Well, I posted this on LinkedIn. Um, John Blair, who's the Charlottesville City Attorney, offered his perspective in the comment section of our LinkedIn. I'm going to offer a little perspective on John Blair and someone please tell John Blair I said this. Someone let John Blair know. The best employee of the city of Charlottesville is the city attorney, John Blair. John Blair is the man. He has a caring heart. He's a golden rule guy. He's patient, he's intelligent, he's knowledgeable, he has tremendous people skills. Proud to call John Blair my friend. Someone tell John Blair that, the city attorney at the city of Charlottesville. So a couple of things he posted on my LinkedIn, and if you're not following me on LinkedIn, you should. Um, our LinkedIn, I think is the third largest LinkedIn community in Charlottesville and central Virginia. We post a lot of entrepreneurial and business knowledge there. So his points, there are a couple of points that I believe are relevant. One, economic development has to be more inclusive and equitable from both a city and county perspective. What can we do to upscale the local workforce? John, I agree. Well said, John Blair. Two, land prices are absolutely ridiculous in Almaral County at this point. Unless and until land prices fall in Almaral County, it's difficult to imagine the wealth gap shrinking in this area. John is exactly right. And frankly speaking, the land prices will not fall. So here's what we need to do to close the wealth gap in Charlottesville, Almaral County and central Virginia, and that wealth gap is expanding. Unless we want this community to be rich, unless we want this community to be white and unless we want this community to be a playground of, of, or a bastion of the rich or evolve into a San Francisco and Seattle, we better get on our horse and do some things. Okay? So we need to take the next generation of students and we need to drive home STEM, science, technology, engineering and math. We need to get the next generation of students and we somehow need to get them on the radar of the Dexcom's of the world. Dexcom, a, a publicly traded company. I own part of Dexcom in my portfolio. The last three days, my portfolio and Wall Street altogether is hemorrhaging red. I mean, we're seeing tech slide, slide, slide and it's, it's, it's crushing my soul. Dexcom is going into the dairy building. It's a dairy central. So Dexcom, instead of recruiting and hiring from outside the area, and that's just one example, Coconstruct, Willow Tree, these businesses come to mind. We need to get the next generation of students that live in Charlottesville and matriculate from schools in our community at Nelson County, Louisa County, Orange County, Fluvanna County, Almaral County, Charlottesville City High School. We need to get them on the recruiting or hiring path of these companies. And if we do that, much like Jesse staying in Nelson, these, the next generation will stay in our area and will have more skin in the game in the area because they grew up here. And because of that grow up here and that skin in the game in the area, they will care more about things like closing this wealth gap. In regards to land prices being astronomical in Almaral County and the city of Charlottesville, soon Nelson County, okay? It's spreading. The tentacles of ridiculously high land prices are spreading throughout Charlottesville and central Virginia. As Charlottesville and Almaral County's inventory is so freaking tight, Fluvanna's, Nelson's, Louisa's, Orange and Greens are then following suit because they're the uh, counties right next to them. You see what I'm saying? So here's what I'm going to give you. The land trust model and we'll welcome Susan Steymart from the Thomas Jefferson uh, Community Land Trust again to the show. I love this model. I love this model where a nonprofit owns the land and this nonprofit constructs um, townhomes, condominiums, single family detached on the land. They then sell the house, but not the land. When you sell the house and not the land, the prices are more affordable. A perfect example, um, in one of the agents that are watching the show, help me out here. An acre of land in Almaral County, an acre of land in Almaral County. Give me an idea of the price point of an acre of land in Almaral County. An acre of land, if it's a quality piece of land in Almaral County, a quality piece of land. An acre of land, if it's a quality piece of land in Almarle County, a quality piece of land, maybe it's flat, it's developable, whatever it may be. Okay? 150 to a quarter million dollars just for the land? Is that fair? Agents watching the show? 150K to 250K just for the land? Is that fair? So if the land is that much money, and then you got to build a house on it, of course it's going to be expensive. So the land trust model makes very much sense to me. Um, of how we can create affordability in this community. We'll welcome Susan Steymart to the show to talk about that this week. I also think we need to improve public transportation. Do we not? Do we not have an unreliable, unpredictable, and frankly, somewhat poor public transportation system in our area? If you wanted to live at Nelson or Orange or Louisa or Crozay, and you consistently needed to get to and from your, the epicenter of employment, the city of Charlottesville, could you legitimately rely on public transportation to get you to and from the job? If we're going to make this community more affordable and close the wealth gap, we must have better public transportation. Now, studio camera, Judah, here's the conundrum. Here's the conundrum of this. People are afraid to ride on buses right now. And if people are afraid to ride on buses right now, public transportation is struggles. It's struggling. It don't have, it doesn't have the money it once had. And the money it once had before COVID wasn't even enough money for it to survive. So we need public transportation to make the community affordable. We need public transportation to close the wealth gap. Yet, public transportation is not having the money come in to become the robust ubiquitous transportation platform we need to help close the, it's, it's a conundrum. It's a catch 22. Another thing we need to prioritize, and I talk about this on the show, I learned this from Keith Smith. I learned this from the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust is the, the, the value of accessory dwelling units. We need as a community to green tape and fast track the ability to build a cottage or to convert a basement into an apartment to make affordability more approachable in reality. Okay? If you're trying to buy a home in Belmont, and that home in Belmont is $500,000. But that home on Goodman, on Little Graves, on Graves, on Montross, has a cottage that you can rent out for a G note a month. Next thing you know, that 25 or $3,000 mortgage is 1,500 or 2K. That helps create affordability. That allows somebody that's trying to enter into the job market to live in a cottage in Belmont and then to walk to their job at Co-construct, to live in a cottage in Belmont and walk to their job at Co-Joffrey Woodruff's building, the former ice park, to live in their cottage in Belmont and walk to Dairy Market or Dairy Central. Right now, the process of doing ADUs or frankly, anything entrepreneurial or creative in the city of Charlottesville or in Almarle County is arduous at best. And I blame a number of people for that, and I'll mention some of their names. Ann Malik comes to mind. Mayor Nakia Walker comes to mind. Okay? The mindset of our leadership must not be, it's got to be perfect for this to be a reality. The mindset of our leadership should be some housing, even though not perfect in my mindset, is better than no housing. So we'll give the entrepreneurs, the developers, the people that want to build a cottage, a little bit of leeway and some green tape to make it happen. So I implore, I implore, and this is what I will do, I implore our local officials to be entrepreneurial and open-minded with their mindset, please. Please. Okay? Perfect, uh, what's the saying? What's the saying, Judah? Perfect is the enemy of good or something like that? You know that saying? Okay, thank you. Sounds about, so I implore them to stop thinking perfection. And I implore them to start thinking creatively, creatively and entrepreneurial. So a couple of ideas how you close the wealth gap. ADUs, better public transportation, economic development for the next generation locally to keep that next generation employed locally. And frankly speaking, that's through STEM. Okay? These things are not being prioritized. We'll go back to a one shot on me as I sit back down in this fantastic chair, Judah Wickhauer. Um, I'm worried, man. I'm worried as a father of a two-year-old. I'm worried as, um, a husband who's having a conversation with his beautiful wife of potentially number two. I'm worried because I look around and I see diversity going away. I'm worried because I look around and I see folks from New York City and Arlington and Boston and Baltimore and Philadelphia and McLean and Washington DC sprinting due to COVID to Charlottesville with their piles and piles and bags and bags and suitcases and suitcases of money. Pushing the middle class away and stepping on the throat of the lower and working class individuals. And that's not a community I want to live in. That's just not a community I want to live in. So let's try to do, frankly speaking, man, it's going to come down to who we elect into Almarle County's Board of Supervisors in Charlottesville City Council. If we continue to elect activists or if we continue to elect closed-minded, old-school thinkers, we will continue to have a community that no one can afford, except for the wealthy. That's not what you want or what I want. Remember that come election time. The next headline comes from, um, a, a, a just downright tough headline, J-Dubs. And it's a country store in Free Union that means so much to the community. Maupin Brothers that's closed its doors after 92 years. J-Dubs, can we get that on screen? It's on screen. Look at the screen, guys. This from the Crozay Gazette. The Crozay Gazette does a hell of a job. They did a fantastic, it must've been a five or 10,000 word story on Maupin Brothers and just the beauty of this country store. After 92 years, the epicenter of Free Union, there's no more. Since 1928, this store has been the place to learn about your neighbors. This store has been the place to leave a package for your friend so he can come pick it up the next afternoon or the next day. This store has been the place where you needed to get a bag of ice, a little bit of food, some seed, and you didn't want to run into town, some grass seed. This store was the place where during hunting season, you saw the hunters in their pickup trucks, sitting in the parking lot, trading tall tales about what they'd killed to feed their family. This store was the place that offered its customers credit without charging interest and said, pay us when you can pay us. This store is, is, is a reflection of better days and finer times of days of trust and honesty and goodwill. This store will be missed in Free Union. I've visited this store so many times, 92 years. We respect and love what that family has done. The next one, J-Dubs, um, as we pick up the pace and tempo, comes from the Big Apple in New York City. New York City means a lot to me. It's the city that never sleeps. I love New York City. My wife spent eight years there working for Blackstone, living in the Upper East Side. New York City is, is regardless of what Jerry Seinfeld says, is getting hammered. And the Wall Street Journal says, New York real estate is being pounded now worse than 9/11 or any financial crass it has ever happened or it's ever experienced. They're comparing year over year sales and it's not pretty. If you want to buy an apartment in the city, you do it now. Why this means to you is the folks that are fleeing the Big Apple, some are coming here to Charlottesville. And that's what is impacting affordability. And we must watch the trickle-down impact from the San Franciscos where Pinterest pays 89.5 million dollars. Yes, Pinterest the app, 89.5 million dollars to get out of its lease with its landlord. We must follow as people are sprinting from the Upper East. Sprinting from Park Avenue, the Upper Wester from Wall Street, Fidiah Tribeca to Charlottesville and to central Virginia because of fears of COVID. I'm not saying it's dead. I'm not saying it's going to collapse. I'm not going to hyperbolize what's happening. I'm saying the real estate market is as vulnerable as any in the world right now, and those are facts. And that vulnerability is impacting our backyard with people bringing their piles of money to buy homes in our community. That's happening. It's happening. The next headline, Judah Wickhauer, comes from Northeastern in Boston. Guys, imagine your mom and dad send you to Northeastern, one of the prestigious schools in America. And they say, son, daughter, we're going to spend $36,000, 36,500 for one semester for you to learn in Northeastern in a hotel room in Boston. Please stay out of trouble. 36,500 is a nice bag of money. And then 11 kids, they're 18, they're 19, they're 20, they can't see past their hand, they can't see the forest through the trees. These kids choose to party, choose to drink, choose to hang out. They break a contract they signed as their parents were striking a 36,500 check. They get kicked out and booted from the school and Northeastern says to mommy and daddy, we keep your money. You're not getting a cent of this back. Look at the John Hancock on this contract. Think about that. That happened this past weekend in Bean Town. This is freaking real. Crazy times, man. Get your comments in. If you want to offer some perspective, now is the time to get your comments in. Put the comments in the comment section, put the comments in the comment section, put the comments in the comment section now. And I will get to them on the I Love Seaville Show in about 30 seconds, Judah. Let's show them how they can save $288 on Ting fiber internet. $288 on Ting fiber internet. You can save the best internet possible in Charlottesville and central Virginia at the lowest price point possible only through this link. IloveSeaville.ting.com. IloveSeaville.ting.com. We did it. It's changed how we do business. Your kids deserve it in this virtual learning environment. Judah Wickhauer, the I Love Seaville Daily Digest airs at 5:00 PM every single day, well, Monday through Friday. Monday through Friday, the I Love Seaville Daily Digest. We'll get to your comments. Uh, Andy Wolfong. My guess is UVA is going to buy the mall. That is, uh, my guess as well. UVA will buy the mall. Yeah. Andy Wolfong says the AC, the ACAC Shopping Center was booming until that new intersection was built. Um, Andy, Andre Xavier, can you please ask Jesse what is Nelson County's position in terms of lodging licenses? Andre, I will tag Jesse on this. Andre Xavier says, ask Jesse Rutherford what his position is, Nelson County's position is in terms of lodging licenses. I ask because right now 90% of the visitors to Route 151 are staying in Charlottesville and Almarle County. Nelson could benefit from the lodging revenue as well. Well said. Andre Xavier. How many hotels do we have out there? We don't have many, right? That's a good question. Um, Jason Burke is watching in Los Angeles. I love Jason Burke. Save Little John, save Little John, save Little Johns. There's a GoFundMe link to save Little Johns. Jason Burke, one of the owners, he says, it, from Los Angeles, he's watching in LA right now. Ease ADU restrictions in Charlottesville. We did this in Los Angeles this year and it has been tremendously impactful for our community. Jason Burke, well said. Um, Olivia Branch, this is for you, Jesse Rutherford. Olivia Branch says, bravo, young man. Bravo, Jesse Rutherford. Jesse Rutherford, you are A-plus people in my book, dude. I legitimately mean that. Um, Jerry, I watch your show religiously and when I do not watch your show, I watch the replay. You are my source for news in this community. Thank you for being positive in your perspective. I don't even watch the news because all they report is the bad. That's Steve Wilkerson. Thank you kindly for watching the broadcast and those kind words, my friend. I'm going to close with some positivity. Judah, do you have the children, the orange soda and happiness? How long is that video? I watched this video over the weekend and it made my heart smile. I watched this video over the weekend and I wanted to know what was in this orange soda. Because whatever was in this orange soda, I need some of this orange soda in my life. We're going to play a video as we close today's show. As we head into the fall, a day after Labor Day in Charlottesville and central Virginia. And I, I, I'm playing this for positivity, for happiness, for those feel-good feelings we need right now in COVID-19. We'll close the show this way. He's Judah Wickhauer. My name is Jerry Miller. This is the I Love Seaville Show on the I Love Seaville Network. I love you guys. I love you guys and I love connecting with you through this platform. Watch this video, turn the volume up. It's going to make your day. Judah, three, two and one.